You're on mute, Gene.
Thank you so much. I will call this special Board of Selectment meeting to order March 8, 2022 at 3:00 PM. Thanks, everybody for coming. Um, and our single item on the agenda is the budget. I just want to have a quick discussion with the two of you. I've had a day filled with curveballs and a couple of little urgencies. So I am not I'm not feeling like I'm really going to be ready to move on the budget. So I just wanted to sort of say that from the get go. We'll get through as much of it as we possibly can. I know we have pretty much hard stop at like 5:30. But I'll be getting in touch after the meeting with Nancy about asking her for an extra few days for before we pitch to the Board of Finance. Because in theory, we have to submit the budget, our, our proposal to the Board of Finance tomorrow. So they have a week to review it. And I'm just not confident we're going to be ready after today. So I just want to sort of say that out at the start. But let's, let's make, make an effort. Um, so just starting.
Can I just say that if, if, if we don't get as far as we think we would like to get? I mean, do we need to think of another meeting before?
Yeah, that's where we're gonna, yeah, I think that's where we're, where we'll end up at the end of this meeting.
Okay.
Um, so just to do the sort of low hanging fruit first, the, in the folder is some additional chore information that the Executive Director sent us. I just wanted to give that a review. It, it looks like it's a pretty level number of clients. The hours have, and it, you know, can't really include 2020 because it was such an anomaly, especially for this kind of service. There are hours going back, that five year look back that we asked for, starting in 2020, was 500 hours in 2020, but then it pops up 8:33, 8:47, 7:66, and 1300. The client contributions were a steady, steady incline going back. And the grant that they received was sort of up and down. But um, you know, the, the, again, I think 2020 is an anomaly. They are serving, you know, a lot of, a lot of people. And the client contributions have gone down considerably. In 2016, it was $8,429. And in 2019, even pre-COVID, it was $3,831. So to me, that's sort of a trend towards, you know, folks who are in need are, are struggling more financially. So they have, they asked for the increase to $10,000 to be put in the budget. So I just wanted to sort of do a wrap up of that information that she sent us.
And they've been with us since 1992?
They've been in, yeah.
And we've been giving them 5,000 since fiscal year 2016. Do you know how much their last ask was, their last increase? Before then?
No. It's not a, you know, the, what they provide specifically for the town of Kent is only a part, but they have expenses that are obviously spread across. It's, it, it's not specific to a town, you know, their administrative expenses, their director, their, you know, overhead for their office hours. That's all, you know, shared among all of the towns.
And which other towns do they serve again?
He named Cornwall, Falls Village, Kent, Norfolk, Salisbury, Lakeville, Sharon.
Okay. And they said they're asking increases with all of those towns?
Yes, that's what she said at the last meeting.
What she said, yeah.
I, you know, in our, you know, the social services is sort of an indicator, I think, of people needing assistance. And social services has been throughout the pandemic. Obviously, you both know incredibly busy. And this is, you know, one facet of that assistance that, that we can help provide for people in Kent. Okay. Do you have anything else? Is there anybody else who's got anything on that? No, I don't know why my blur is on, that's strange. Sorry about that. So, um, where would you all like to go next?
Hours.
Okay, do you want to?
Right away.
Okay, do we want to address the, um, there's some documents in the folder? The, I don't see Jen on the call, but she provided some additional narrative. So why don't we start there?
I think that we should start with the general where we are with, in terms of like an increase across the board. And, and tied on that. And then we can go into the specifics of the few that actually asked for additional hours or whatever else. And I, I don't know what you guys are thinking about. I know the numbers, you know, Donna gave us some sort of general information in response to the question I'd asked last meeting. As to, you know, the, at 6%, what it would be for an increase on the last page there. 28,208 across the board. I don't think that's enough. I think that with the couple of hires that we've made where we've had to raise salaries to get people that we want in positions is an indication that Kent has kind of lagged behind. And so I think there are, um, you know, we, we would have to look at some of the individual ones that maybe didn't ask for 6% after we decide. But I really believe that we should go with an 8% increase across the board. And the, the difference there isn't again, that great. You know, if you looked at, looked at some of the others, you know, we will, I think in my mind, there are certain areas that where we are going to need to cut unreasonable requests. And I think we'd end up basically where we are. But in, I think that, um, you know, cost of living every year is one thing, but I tend to agree that these folks have come to work every day through two tough years. And I think that this is a year where we maybe say, okay, you've done a great job and we want you to keep working for the town of Kent. And let's give you a little bump. So that's where I think we should be at. I think we should go with an 8% increase. And so if we want to go have a discussion now, or I'll make a motion that we start our salary discussion. I'll make a motion that we.
Yeah, I'd rather not, you make a motion. We haven't been making motions on any of the discussion with this is really, really discussion.
Let's do 8, 8% and open it up to what you guys are thinking.
Can I give a little, a little presentation of numbers? I was looking at every budget, Kent budget for the last 15 years. And, you know, just seeing how many across the board increase, salary increases that there were, what they were. And, you know, it's, it's been a low of 2%. I think last year was two, to, to a high of 3.6. And, and I tried to relate that with COLA. I, I looked up a bunch of COLA numbers, went on social security.gov and looked up all the numbers and learned a bunch. In the last 30 years, COLA was seven times 3.0 or above. Last 30 years, in the last 15 years, it's been three times for, for three years above 3.0. It happened during the financial crisis of '07, '08, COLA was 5.8. Happened again in 2011, COLA was 3.6. And, and then, of course, this year with, with inflation caused by a bunch of issues, 5.9. So what I wanted to do was just, was just see precedent, just to see what this town has does, has done in the past regarding salaries. And you know, I mean, without question, the town has responded to COLA, has, has factored in the cost of living. And, you know, three times in the last 15 years, COLA was 0.0. Actually didn't go up at all, which I found interesting. But what, what, what I, what I discovered, if I'm reading all of this correctly, is that the salary increases for town employees during the, the '07, '08 financial crisis, when COLA was 5.8, similar to today, was 3.6%. Also 3.64, kind of fluctuated a little bit between 3.61, 3.64. The following year was 3%. After that, it was 2. When COLA was up 3.6, salaries went up 3.5. They, they went back up again. And then for the seven years after that, it went to 2.5 and then 3.0 for six straight years. And then last year was two. So just, you know, I just want to know what the town has done. I mean, I, I want to know, you know, what, what, what has the town done when COLA has been up? And, and that is what I found, if I'm reading the numbers correctly.
So it sounds to me, Glenn, that there were years where we responded, but not enough. We didn't match COLA.
You know, and I, I can't speak, I can't speak for the conversations then. I mean, I'm not going to pretend I know so much looking at the budget. However, it seems like COLA and the Consumer Price Index, I looked at the Consumer Price Index for all of these years as well. And, and that's, that's another index. And, and those numbers don't exactly match COLA, but are very close. I mean, the Consumer Price Index and COLA are, are pretty similar. But, but it seems like this town has responded to COLA when that has gone up. And those have been the numbers, just to say it.
And so what, so from that, what do you extrapolate or I guess I'm looking for an opinion or based on that information?
I mean, I, I, Glenn, you said there was years where cost of living increase went up. I forgot what it was, you know, 5.6 or something, and we were three something. That puts the Kent workers behind. And then even when you match COLA in all the ensuing years, they're still behind. Because you didn't give them that cost of living increase back in 2007 or eight, or whatever it was. You know, so, um, I think if, you know, you look around, I mean, I've been trying to do some research into other salaries and different towns and things like that. Were a little bit lower. I think to do 8% is a, an adjustment that would, you know, it's not that extravagant. It might go up in, you know, $1,000 or something. A little bit, possibly, you know, zoning enforcement officer. Oh, no, that, you know, it, from, from the 6%, it would be another 800 and some odd dollars for that salary line. I feel that we should be cognizant of the fact that, you know, we, we, we have kind of looked at, you know, with, with the appointment of the Park and Rec Director, you know, we couldn't get a good candidate unless we bumped up the salary. So that, you know, that's an exception. And, and I, I think that would be something outside of the general increase. I think there are some exceptions that we have to look at. You know, he's already getting a certain amount. You know, maybe we treat him as a different case. But for, for the, most of the people who put in for their 6% raise, I think we should go with a, I, I really feel that that is fair to all the people who have been working. I, I've heard their, you know, I've heard what they've been saying. And I think some of the individual ones that have come to us looking for increased hours or whatever. I mean, I think they're looking at, at different ways of, of getting an increased salary to compensate for what they feel has been the town not necessarily keeping up over the, over the years. So that's how I read the situation. I mean, if you looked at the numbers again, that, you know, Donna had the difference, the 6% over this year as an increase of 28,000 to 08. Uh, let's see what we've got. I had the numbers earlier, but I don't know what it did with that. We'd go from 470 instead of to 498, we'd go to 507 for that group. That's not much of a an increase in, in the whole tranche, salary tranche. And, and again, that, you know, as Donna admitted, her numbers were very basic and does not include the departments that were asking for more than six. But, uh, so she had the, the difference between fiscal years 21, 22 at 28, 308. And this, this, the, from the 470,000. And if you multiply that by 8%, you know, you come up with 507, 641. So.
But it's also missing, if I'm reading this correctly, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10 positions.
Well, those were the ones that came in asking for something different. And some of them are, some of them are different, so, you know, but we need to maybe look at, at the reasons why those departments came in, whether it's more hours or more people, or like the registrars for more elections for the coming year. You know, their numbers changed a little bit. But for all the others, I think that's a good starting point. You know, like so, some of these are, you know, we have the notes for the, the assessor and the treasurer and stuff, the increased hours or this or that. And those will have to look at individually, but for all the others, I feel that you know, maybe it's time for Kent to catch up and, and make it a slightly, you know, even playing field. Because if you short change somebody on cost of living increase in year one, and then you sort of match years nine through 10, they're still behind. Because you, you set them back in year one. And it doesn't matter if you, you match all the other years, they're still behind. So I, Glenn, when you were looking at your figures, you said there were two or three years where there was sort of a major cost of living increase. And, and Kent gave an increase, but not matching COLA.
Yeah, it, it, 2011 it matched, in 2008 it didn't. But, but in other years, town salaries have been above COLA. Across the board increases, same.
And then what happened with the, um, there was a review process in, what was that, 16 or 18? Where there were a lot of adjustments for other salaries. So I think if we're going to look at this in a sort of holistic way, we should probably take a look at that, too.
I didn't, I didn't have to, I mean, I, I investigated other towns. It was, it was very interesting to see what the budget of other towns looked like. I, I want to relate our budget with theirs, you know, after reading Donna's letter and, and Jen's information. And, you know, depending on the town and the size of the town and, you know, a lot of salary increases generally are 2 to 3.5% generally. Most years, there are, there are some cases where across the board salary increases are, are four. I did see that. Eight would be large. I don't, I don't think I saw anything like that. Certainly that hasn't happened in Kent. Not in the 15 years that I've seen. Maybe, maybe in, maybe before 2007. But in the budgets that, that are, that are on our website, that are on the Board of Finance, those, those archive budgets, we, we have not even approached 8%.
Maybe not, but maybe this is the year, and it's not. I look at this as a, a one-shot deal. I mean, I don't think that because you do it this year, you have to do it next year or the following year. I just, you know, there's a lot of people who have come for one reason or another to try to increase their, their salary lines. And and so there's a little bit of unrest in the town as to whether or not the present salaries are adequate.
That is true.
And so I think, you know, a one-shot deal. And next year, when we start out, hopefully, we're looking at not so many individual, you know, requests and whatnot. And I, I just think it would be a prudent use of money to go back into the pockets of the people who work so hard for the town, most of which will be spent in town. And it's I mean, I, you know, I'm not one to, to say that we should be free and loose with everybody, the taxpayers' money. But I think we owe a nod to the workers of Kent. And this is a way to do it.
Other, other employees of the town, the highway folks and the, and the teachers, what, what did they get this year? And I know they're different.
We don't know what the BOE increase, they don't, they haven't published their budget yet. And the union employees are, there, it's part of their contract.
Yeah.
So we would have to talk, we would have to talk to the union if I don't know how that works if we're going to give some employees a different increase than, um, unionized employees that I have, I'd have to talk to them.
Unionized employees are, that's, that's, that's union contract. Teachers, when I was teaching in New Melford, there were years where we didn't even come close to getting even across the board because of how the Board of Ed finagled step, whether you, you, you went up on a step increment or not. Some years, they put more money toward the first year teachers to try to attract new teachers. And, you know, people have been there for a long time, we're getting peanuts compared to other teachers. So it wasn't even, even across the board. But that was their contract.
Will, when will we know what KCS teachers are getting? Will we know before?
When they, um, present the budget with the Board of Finance at the Board of Finance meeting.
You know, again, that's out of, out of our purview. Unfortunately. You know, the towns are split up that way, but you know. They have their own contracts and. Negotiations.
I do have concern about the, um. It's a, it's a big. Jump as far as a percentage. I think it's probably unprecedented, I don't want to put Barbara on the spot, um, but I think it's an unprecedented. Increase and there, again, there was that. Management review where the purpose was to. Understand better where everybody's salaries were and do some. Equalizing but correcting corrective. Action as far as bringing people up to what a. Comparable position would be, I also have concerns about. The disparity with, and I know that with the disparity with the union. Um, contract increase. And. I know that they put more into their pension, but, um. Just have some. Some concerns and. You know, one of the things that we haven't really talked about is. This, the sort of concept of, um, not just a cost of living. One blanket across the board increase, but, um. Having some sort of performance measures within departments so that you can give those, um. Oh, the words escaping me. The. You know, raises for, um, meeting the goals and, um. Meeting the performance goals that. The department and the board would set for that department during, you know, at the beginning of the year, beginning of the fiscal year. It would, you know, you would set goals with each department. And if they would, if they were to meet those goals and objectives and they would get a, a performance increase. And that, that's where it would vary based on, um. Performance, so that's something that. Probably should be talked about as we move along. Not for. Today, but.
Not for today, probably not this cycle, since we gotta get this in.
No, not for this cycle.
Not for the cycle.
Absence of that, you know, I, I just. I know there's unrest. Amongst. People feel that they've worked. Through two tough years and, and this is, you know, would be. Probably. You know, if you look at that, it's, you know, we're just, uh, it, it, it's not. Giving them. A solid gold watch, which probably would be maybe even worth more than what I'm proposing. Per person.
If it's anything like the, uh, um, fuel price that Rick just. Informed me of. If, if gold is, uh, going the way that fuel is, then yeah, you're probably right.
Uh, I'll just say this, I mean, ba, ba, based on the numbers I told you, based on the history of this town. I was more than comfortable with going to three point five. I mean, we've done it before. It has happened. Um, and, and looking at other towns and looking at some other across the board increases, I've seen a few four percents and. I, I'm willing to do that, too, on the basis of. You know, wha, what, what we decided with. With the social services and, uh, park and rec. Um, I was, if you, if you two remember, I was pretty concerned about the park and rec salary, um, uh, I, I, I called that special meeting. I wanted to learn more about that hiring process, which I did on that day. And, 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 and I think it all worked out, but. Uh, but nevertheless, I was concerned about. About that salary and, and here we are. Um, so. For that reason. Uh, and, and social services making that full-time, uh, I was willing to go to four. Doing something we haven't done before. In fifteen years. I was willing to go that far. Eight percent for me is, is, is a lot. And it's, and, and it's a lot. Uh, and, and Rufus, I hear exactly what you're saying, I, I, I hear, and, and I, I, I hear the folks in town hall, I hear what you're saying. Um, and, and I do. I do want to close that gap. Between what we've done with two other departments. And what they're asking for. But. But, but above four is big. Four is big. For this town.
But now you're saying you're, you're gonna go less than cola, you're putting them in a worse position. You're not even giving them the cost of living. And that. I, to me, that's unacceptable. Um, and I, I. I know what, you know, I know other towns are doing different things, but I, I, that doesn't mean we do that.
No, I understand that, I, I, I understand that.
You know, um. So.
So, okay, so, so. So what we're saying here is something like this, I mean, I hear a lot about this cola, this is the, the, the most I've heard about cola in my life, um, so. Usually it's below three. Usually. Um, and seven out of the last fifteen years, we have given across the board. Increases of three percent.
Sorry.
So what? I mean, you know, and, and maybe next year and the year after, it's, I'm sure it's not gonna be zero point zero, the way the world is going right now. Inflation, war in Ukraine and all of that. However, I also don't want to be tied to cola so much that if it becomes low again, by the way, when it was low. It, in two thousand fifteen, it was zero, uh, two thousand sixteen, it was zero point three. It doesn't seventeen, it went to two point zero, so. You know, I don't want to be so tied to cola that. The town employee salaries. You know, are, are. Are that, you're very low. But when, but when they're high, I mean, cola's high and cost of, the cost of living is high right now.
I mean, I think.
I get it.
Look at the cycles and, and there are a few spots where it's gone up and.
Yep.
And the town doesn't match it, you know, so you do it once and. And then you put everybody back on that. Level. You sort of leveled the. The, the big picture over fifteen, twenty years, you know, because when, when, you know, like I said, if you, if you don't meet it. On year one. Then that person. Continues to be behind as you march forward. And, uh, I. I just think that. You know, may. I, I think it would be a, a. Sort of a disservice and almost an insult to go below cola. At this time. When we're facing. A big cost of living. Adjustment. Um, and, uh. I think the. Town hall, we've, we have, for the most part, we've had people in town hall for many years. And, um, I think a one-time. Boost. Is like saying, hey, you know, we did a great job over the last two years. There's a little Christmas bonus. Spread out over the next fifty-two weeks.
Well, it's not really a one-time, I mean, you're increasing salaries by eight percent forever. And so.
Well, we keep that.
If you wanted to do a bonus. Maybe. We think about. Doing. I know that I, I think Cornwall did a, um. Gave their employees last year. A bonus, um. That was a one-time. Bonus and maybe that's just a different way to think about it. And. I don't know if it's, well, I know for essential employees, there's that, um. What is it, um, not, uh, not benefit, um. Uh, it's a premium pay, um, that's an eligible, um, bucket. Under the ARPA, um. Under the final rule for the ARPA funding. So that would be a different way to think about it. So it's not hitting the taxes, the tax base.
So, so, so a town's do a one-time bonus then, that happens.
I think, I think there are probably better uses of ARPA than that, though, I think ARPA. You know, for the, the big. Infrastructure. I mean, what we're gonna get for the town of Kent is just gonna. You know, get sucked up in no time.
But, but wait, to towns do give a one-time bonus, not, not our but or anything, just that does happen. Is, is that something to consider?
Doing a. Um, flat rate and then giving a. A one-time bonus and there's, so there's something that I'm not. I haven't been able to drill down and understand, there's a, so the traditional sort of cola term. Is for, is based on the federal retiree. Pay. But then there's, I've read a number of articles on the interwebs about the, um. The, the, for federal workers, for current federal workers, that there's a cost of living increase. And that is. So there's a little variability, but, um. This particular article says that it's a two point seven average federal pay raise for civilian employees in twenty twenty-two, then there's a, um. A, what is that called, a locality, um, a locality adjustment. Plus an additional point five percent in locality adjustments, so. Um. So I'm sorry, so that going back, the president authorized two point two across the board federal pay raise to all general schedule employees. Plus an additional point five in locality adjustments, so I'm not really sure. What the difference is between that and. The federal retirees. Cola. So.
But that doesn't.
Very different.
Yeah, that's federal.
Well, they're both federal, one is federal retirees and one is, one is federal workers, so the. The five point nine is for people who are retiring. In twenty twenty. At, are or have retired in twenty twenty-two. According to the, I believe it's a Social Security Administration website. Yes, so these cost of living increases apply to social security benefits.
For federal workers. Are you guys still around?
I think town hall lost its power.
Seems like it.
Yeah, they're all dropping.
So again, I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting. At four ten. And we're calling, due to a, a power failure. In town.
So we can't decide on the next time we meet right now? We're just adjourning?
Under FOI, we shouldn't, we should. We should close the meeting.
Except that the power's back on, Donna says.
In the building? I'm, I'm sitting on the side of the road right at my driveway.
This is very, um.
I'm at home and we have power now.
Disappointing. Glenn and I are both available on Monday, the fourteenth, let's start early and we'll go until we're done.
Can we please adjourn the meeting so that we can do this the proper legal way? Joyce will send out an email to the three of us, we'll schedule another meeting. Give a second for my motion, please.
Second.
Glenn seconded it.
Seconded.
And again, this is all out of. Out of our control and we're just trying to do the right thing. So I'll. Voting yes to adjourn the meeting. I can't see anybody, so I need to hear Glenn and Rufus, I need to hear your votes.
I would say this is, this is highly unusual, clearly, um, I would say let's, let's adjourn right now and we need to meet very, very soon.
Yes, I just need a, I need a, I need the two other Board of Selectment members to.
No.
Vote out loud so that I can hear you, because I can't see you.
I said no. One said yes.
I'm gonna say yes, I don't think we can be very productive right now, that's why I'm saying yes.
Thank you, Joyce. Got that.
Yep. Okay, I'm gonna end the meeting.
Thank you, and we'll.